Guiding educators to teach this content prevents students from being harmed in the classroom by outdated approaches. I feel confident that these proposed standards do just that. Passing the proposed Michigan Health Education Standards Framework would help ensure that Michigan students are building health-related skills that are not only in alignment with current best practice research, but relevant to their needs as young people in 2025. Increasing the likelihood that they will make healthy decisions, enabling them to lead healthy lives. I strongly urge the board to pass the Health Education Standards Framework. Thank you all for your leadership and for allowing public input on this important topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
I can, hi.
Hi, if you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Okay, thank you. My name is Elliot Deticia. Can I go ahead?
Yes, you can, yep.
Okay, and I want to thank the members of the State Board of Education for this opportunity. As a pediatrician, I've spent the past fifteen years focused on school health. This began with Henry Ford Health Systems School-Based Community Health Program. And from there, I went on to serve as the Health Officer for Detroit Public Schools Community District. I became especially passionate about the connection between health and education, specifically health and attendance. I currently wear many hats, including Senior Fellow for Health with Attendance Works and School Health Consultant with Detroit Parent Network. Research shows a strong connection between health and education.
Are you still there caller?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was listening to the screen and heard myself twice. Children who are dealing with acute and chronic health conditions are more likely to be absent from school. And if a child is chronically absent, there may be a health-related condition or issue that needs to be addressed. Chronic absence is also an early warning sign that students are off track for reading by the end of third grade, performing in middle school and graduating from high school. They're also more likely to display behavior and discipline problems and engage in unhealthy activities. On a more positive note, healthy students are more likely to attend school, better able to stay focused and engaged and be ready to learn. These same students will be more likely to graduate and live healthier, more fulfilling lives. The updated Health Education Standards are long overdue and will help our students learn vital health education information and skills that will prepare them as they grow into healthy adults. They add attention to the critical skills needed to support student health, well-being, and school performance, and are broad enough to apply as new health issues emerge. Students also learn the importance of reaching out to parents and other trusted adults for various health-related issues. I especially appreciate the focus on health promotion and relationship skills. Michigan's Youth Risk Behavior Survey shows that over forty percent of high school students do not feel connected to a single person at school. Where does this lead motivation to attend? Through the updated standards, students in early school years will demonstrate strategies that help students feel welcome and valued. By middle school, students analyze how social media impacts relationships. And in high school, students learn how behavioral and environmental factors impact their health. Health education is critical to engaging our students and ensuring they have the necessary tools and resources to feel safe and supported. It starts by prioritizing health and taking a prevention approach that is evidence-based. The draft framework does this through a thoughtful and thorough whole-child approach with enough flexibility to allow local district adaptation based on student needs. As a pediatrician and a parent, I am thrilled to see an update to the standards, and I urge you to adopt them so that we can provide our students with a healthy and safe learning environment that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can.
Caller, are you there?
I am, yes, I already went.
Yes, you, you can go ahead and hang up if you're, if you're all set.
I got it, thank you.
Thank you. Caller, are you there? You may be muted. Try and unmute one more time. Caller, can you hear me? We are not able to hear you. Caller, if you, if you would please hang up and call back in, we'll put you back in the queue to provide public comment. Mike, can we move to the next caller, please? Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you. If you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
This is Susan Rockwell, I'm calling from LaStiga, Michigan. And I think that total document should be scrapped, started from scratch. You, you use a document from Massachusetts, which is one of the most red states in the country, and it's the most quote-unquote "ecable" and hor- horrible to our kids. The very first paragraph starts out by leaving out reading as a major content area. Why is the Michigan Education Standards Framework modeled after the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework for Competitive Health? And stated in our our bill of rights, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain and available rights, among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Our county is based, country is based on equality. It's not, no, nothing's mentioned about equity. Our country is based on equality. And the things laid out in this document are abhorrent to House. Talking about private parts with kindergarteners is not needed to be done. Talking about masturbation in studying grade three is abhorrent. These things listed in this document are so vague as to allow anything goes. And I am totally against it, and it should be scratched, and something on a more conservative area should be reinstated. And at the very least, our parents should be able to opt out. So I am totally against it, thank you.
Go ahead and hang up if you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, are you there? You may be muted. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you.
Susan, if you've completed your three minutes, you can hang up and we'll go to the next caller.
Um, I'm here, coming now.
Susan, we've already gotten your minutes, if you, if you can go ahead and hang up the phone now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if we record them and then put them on. Somebody was talking on there, whatever.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. If you can please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. Good afternoon, my name is Stacy Sills, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As a parent and former health education teacher in Ottawa County, and advocate for student well-being, we know that health education is more than a single subject. It's the foundation for lifelong wellness and success. One of the most powerful components of Michigan's new Health Education Standards Framework is Practice Six: Advocacy and Health Promotion. Practice Six calls on students to promote personal, family, and community health and well-being. It encourages them in age-appropriate ways to recognize their own and others' health needs, whether that's physical activity, access to clean air, or emotional well-being, and to take informed action. It's about developing the skills, confidence, and compassion to make a difference in their own lives and in the lives around them. For our youngest learners, that might mean encouraging a classmate to wash their hands or sneeze into their sleeve to prevent the spread of germs. For middle and high school students, it might mean addressing mental health stigma, recognizing warning signs of suicide, or organizing efforts to promote healthy choices among peers. In every grade, advocacy gives students a sense of agency, that they learn that they can be part of the solution. Through these advocacy skills, students also learn to analyze information critically, question what they see and hear to separate facts from misinformation, and to evaluate whether a source is credible. In an age when health information spreads quickly, sometimes inaccurately, these are essential life skills. The same principle applies here today. You may have heard comments that reflect fear or information rather than evidence. By the way, sexuality standards are already in the current 2007 health standards. Just as we teach our students to do, we must look to valid, reliable sources and collective expertise of educators and health professionals when making decisions that impact student learning and well-being. Students who can identify trustworthy sources are better prepared to protect not just their own health, but the health of their families and communities. And this work doesn't stand alone. Because of the strong advocacy embedded within these new standards, major educational organizations across Michigan have voiced their support, including the Michigan School Health Coordinators Association, sorry, State Michigan, the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, the Michigan Association of School Boards, the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, and the Michigan Association of Superintendent and Administrators. They urge the School Board of Education to center its decision-making on the professional expertise of those who work most closely with these issues every day. Their message is clear, we should listen to the experts. These experts are teachers, health professionals, and educational leaders. Understand that when students are healthy, they learn better. By passing and implementing the new Health Education Standards Framework, we're not just updating curriculum, we're equipping students to think critically, act compassionately, and lead courageously in a world where their voices and actions matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Thank you, um, my name is DeeDee Rush, I am calling from Jackson. I've been a teacher for twenty-four years in public schools, and I am speaking on behalf of the Michigan Association of Family and Consumer Sciences. Um, I'm going to read the letter that we as an association created. We are, we are writing to express our strong support for the newly proposed Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. These standards represent a critical and long overdue update. The Michigan Health Education Standards have not been revised since 2007, that's almost twenty years old. We commend the Michigan Department of Education for developing comprehensive, evidence-based, and age-appropriate standards that reflect the needs of today's students. We are particularly supportive of the emphasis on mental and emotional health, safety, healthy relationships, balanced eating and physical activity, substance use and misuse, sexual health, personal health and wellness, and community and environmental health. While we understand that the draft standards will be revised based on feedback from the stakeholders, we urge the State Board of Ed to resist removing certain content that is deemed vital by some, but objectionable by others. Please allow districts to make adjustments at the local level based on community needs. As an organization representing family consumer sciences educators across Michigan, we recognize the profound impact that comprehensive health education has on improving the health and well-being of Michigan's families, children, and youth. FCS educators bring unique interdisciplinary expertise to health education, integrating content from nutritional science, human development, family studies, and consumer sciences into practical, applied learning experiences. The proposed standard's emphasis on skill development rather than just knowledge acquisition is particularly aligned with FCS pedagogy. Our educators excel at helping students apply health concepts through hands-on learning, critical thinking, and real-world problem-solving, the very skills that these standards aim to develop. These updated standards will equip students with the knowledge and skills to make informed decisions, establish healthy behaviors, and thrive in both, both inside and outside of the classroom. By aligning health education with the realities that young people face today, the Michigan Department of Ed is taking an important step toward preparing healthier future generations. We strongly support the adoption of these proposed standards and look forward to ensuring that Michigan schools have the guidance and framework needed to provide high-quality health education. Thank you for your leadership and the opportunity to provide input during this public comment period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Very good, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
Certainly, thank you. Uh, my name is Ethan Alexander, and I'm a school culture and climate specialist at Kalamazoo Risa in Kalamazoo. And I'm calling to support the new Health Education Standards. I can tell you that I spend a lot of time in schools every day. I work in nine different school districts in Kalamazoo County, in elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. And I will tell you what I notice. The districts that invest in teaching students to understand themselves and others on a social, emotional level create students that seem to be healthy, balanced, and well-behaved. These are kids that understand their emotions, understand how to build relationships with others, and can make sound decisions. They understand when they're upset and they need to ask for a break. They understand when they're feeling calm, centered, and safe. They can stay in class and engage in learning. All of this work translates into healthier students. And so when I look at the new Health Education Standards, it's clear that this is a framework that supports students' learning in many important life skills. Um, I also understand that taking time during the school day to teach these skills may feel counterintuitive. Yes, students may not be starting their day doing math problems or writing prompts. However, we are not wasting our time in teaching these skills. When students learn about their emotions and can manage themselves, they are not wasting valuable time in school, disrupting others, waiting to talk to the principal, or sitting in a detention room. They're in-class learning real-life skills that will help them for the next chapter in their life. And I think that is what we all want at the end of the day. So, I am proud to be living in a state where we advocate for educating the whole child, and I hope we can continue in this work and in the success of our young people. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear my comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
I can.
Very good, if you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Hello, my name is Daniela Canto. Thank you for talking to us and hearing us, and I'd like to work together to help our children in the schools. My first question is why? Why would you want to combine health education and sex education? Why would it be in the best interest of the students to have these combined unless it's because parents won't be able to opt their children out of sensitive, explicit topics that go against their religious beliefs? Why would you want to change the curriculum when this does not increase their knowledge of math, reading, science, and government? The foundation of what children need is their parents and schools working together and helping our children not to be ranked forty-fourth in our country in reading comprehension. We need to work together on this and not have our school board isolating parents on having any input, making parents comply to something that would actually harm our children. I want health education and sex education to remain separate, and for the school board to concentrate on the foundation of education instead of maneuvering their agenda that is against parents and students that they do not want and would harm our students and children. Every parent should have a say on what is appropriate teachings to their children and have an opt-out forum if it goes against their wishes. Please don't go against the parents and teachers that want to teach the basics to help children succeed instead of trying to incorporate teaching that goes against many religions. Keep health education separate from sex education, and thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Very good, if you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment. If you could mute the YouTube in the background, that would be helpful, too.
Yes, I was just gonna say it's different than what's here.
Yeah, it's delayed a little bit, it's true.
Okay, um, my name is Brenda Phelan. And what else was I supposed to say?
Where you're calling from, and then you can provide your comment.
Okay, I'm calling from Portland, Michigan, and my name is Brenda Phelan. I want to say that it's appalling to watch, all these uninterested uh, board members, the majority of them. Um, I want to say thank you to Tom and Nikki, who are standing up for the parents and righteousness, so to you too. Thank you so much. Um, the other ones, I can see that you are extremely uninterested in what's going on. Um, I'm asking you to please reject the Health Education Standard. It takes away parental rights and is extremely harmful to our children. Earlier, I heard a board member say that this is misinformation. Are you telling me that all the people that are speaking out against this health curriculum are misinformed? This is clearly not misinformation. We, the people, are watching, and we know what is happening, we are way smarter than that. You are clearly pushing an extremely dangerous agenda. Um, and I would also like to say, state again, that we, I'm asking you to reject the Health Education Standards. It's extremely dangerous, thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Hello, how are you? Yes, I can.
I'm very well, thank you. If you would please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your public comment.
Absolutely, uh, my name is Cassandra Netherton, and I am calling from Trenton, Michigan. I am a mom, I have two children. My son is in fifth grade, and as we were going through this, I had done quite a bit of research. Um, I will say I would, um, I would say that my stance would be to strongly oppose the health standards, at least in the way that they have been um, drawn up, including sex education as part of health education. I have reviewed them at length, and I do think that some of the standards, um, such as like the parts of um, teaching the kids to have emotional health and about safety, and many of the different things in there are, are, you know, good for children. But I think that as parents, um, especially with so much of the agendas that have been perpetuated lately across the nation, there has been so many different reports and the things that we see on the media and things like that, that parents are greatly on, on guard. And so, I just want to say again that there's so many things that have been already stated. The US Constitution gives us the right to raise our children, it gives each of us a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We all have rights to our religious freedoms. And as a believer in Jesus Christ, I believe that it is my right as a parent to, um, to choose when and how I would inform my child about any of the sexual aspects of things. So I would strongly ask for that to remain separate, and for that to be, um, it, its whole own, you know, own thing, whether it's a opt-out forum, whether it's, you know, but I would, I would ask that that would remain, um, separate. Um, also, um, I wanted to read one more thing. Um, President Trump did, I, I know that Ms. Lipton made the comment uh, that the Supreme Court ruling, uh, from an attorney's standpoint, um, saying that it was, most of the issues were on how it was being delivered or something in, in the classroom. Um, and she also made a comment that the government doesn't get to, or that the national government doesn't get to, um, um, have in a, a say on how, um, the school curriculum is chosen. But there is a White House, a presidential, um, order that was regarding ending radical indoctrination in K through twelve schooling. And there are some harmful, um, ideas woven into this framework. If, if you had just the framework separated, um, from the sexual aspects of things, it wouldn't be quite so damaging, um, but I would say that this goes against the-
Thank you caller for your comments today, thank you.
Yep, have a great day.
You too. Hello caller, can you hear me? Hello caller, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can, thank you. If you'd please state your name.
I have to mute the YouTube.
Very good, yep. All set?
Okay, I'm sorry, there's such a delay.
Yes, there is quite a delay, yep. Yes, if you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Yes, my name is Renee Alexander, I'm calling from Gaylord, Michigan. Um, first of all, thank you for including us, those of us who have waited online. I have been waiting online since one o'clock. I had to call back in seven times because you get knocked off after thirty minutes. Your hold music is extremely loud, and it makes it very hard to hear what's on YouTube. Um, so that needs to be fixed. Um, I am strongly opposed to mixing health curriculum with sex ed curriculum. I am very active with my school board here, and we just finally came into compliance with the Sex Education Board at the, in the middle of last school year. I was, um, an integral part of helping, uh, find the people to get on the board, to educate, um, the people in the community about what a sex education board was to be. Um, and I am a grandmother, and I am a mother of three. And there is no way that, uh, from what I have read through these fifty pages, and I am not uninformed, I am not misinformed, I'm very informed, I'm highly educated, and I am able to read and comprehend what I read, unlike most of our Michigan students, including those here in Gaylord, who are failing miserably at reading and math. And I think we need to get back to focusing on the fundamentals and let the parents be the ones to educate their children with sex education, and to choose which morals they wish to stand by. The things that are included in here are things that I didn't discuss with my children until they were in junior high and high school. To think that a kindergartner or a preschooler could be hearing some of these things is abhorrent. This is the job of the parents, this is the job of the, that happens within the family and within their framework. No matter what their religious beliefs are or what their morals are, it should happen within a family. And we need to keep it that way. I thank Mrs. Snyder and Mr. McMillan for standing up and supporting the resolution, and I wish that more of you would have supported it today and given it more time. And for those of you who are saying, I haven't had time to read it yet, it's only fifty pages, it will not take that long to read, and please read it thoroughly. Please, before you vote on it, make sure you thoroughly understand what you're about to do to the students here in Michigan. We cannot have a sex ed curriculum mixed with a health curriculum here in our state. We are already losing students to the public school in droves, it's happening here in Gaylord. People are pulling their children out and homeschooling them, you're talking about lack of funding? It's going to get worse if you pass something like this in the state of Michigan. I talk to parents every day across the state with my business, and they are, they are astounded that anything like this would even be coming onto the, um, State Board of Education radar. And also, there was somebody that listed a whole bunch of organizations a few minutes ago.
Thank you caller for your comment today. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Hi, my name is Jessica Tucker, and I'm from Sandville.
Very good.
Hey, I am thankful for the privilege to address my concerns and oppose the proposed health standards for our public schools. I'm a mother of eight children, and I'm very concerned about these proposed ideas. I want to be clear that we are not trying to reject updated health education resources- I want to be clear that we are not trying to reject updated health education resources, but your proposal elects to adopt a curriculum that includes teaching sexual preferences and subjective gender ideology. It proposes to include, quote, "modern ideas for relationship preferences". It also proposes to include teaching our children to embrace the decision of another person's sexual preferences and gender identification in an attempt to avoid any bullying. Embracing these ideas are not upholding our moral standards or biblical viewpoint of our family. I do not believe these subjective viewpoints should be taught in health education. They should remain outside of the health education teachings. My child's sexuality should be left to be nurtured and matured within the loving environment of our home, not the school setting. I also believe that teaching to respect another person's lifestyle preference should be taught at home under the morals and biblical viewpoints of our family. What I'm referring to is the, quote, "respect training" included in this proposal. Teaching our children to respect without forcing our children to adopt and address another person in a way that would be against their moral standards can be taught at home. And teaching it to our children in the way it is proposed in this health education proposal, I believe will cause great distress and confusion to our children who do not have the same moral convictions. Therefore, I believe it will start a whole new stream of mental illness with those children who are being forced to adopt these agreeabilities. Furthermore, you state the availability to ta- opt out of the health education for our children if we do not agree with these viewpoints. However, with the standard proposal adopted and included in health class, it would cost our children to miss out on the true valuable education of health because it would be intertwined with sexual education. They should not be intertwined into health. I feel very strongly that our children should be allowed to be taught health without having these subjective matters intertwined. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. If you could mute the YouTube in the background, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Alright, my name is Susan Moyer, I'm calling from Portland, Michigan. Um, I am a parent and a grandparent. Um, I am asking that you please reject the health education standards. This is taking parental rights away and is extremely harmful to children, families, and religious liberties. There are several parents who have discussed and said they will be pulling their children from the public school system if this goes through. So please reject it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
Hi, my name is Jess Ulojak. I am a current high school student, um, in twelfth grade. Uh, I go to a gifted talented public school in Saginaw, Michigan. And outside of high school, I'm on the Youth Advisory Council with the Michigan Organization on Adolescent Sexual Health. I want to express my strong support for the updated Michigan Health Education Standards. I'm so happy to see them finally get an update. Seeing that the Michigan Health Education Standards includes content on the definition of gender identity, which, which I should quickly mention is something that every human being has, transgender or not, really gave me a spark of hope for transgender students like myself. Public schools can often be extremely hostile environments for transgender students of all ages. Um, and I would have felt a lot more safe as a transgender student going to a Michigan public school, knowing that the State Board of Education is adopting Michigan Health Education Standards that include like formally defining gender identity to avoid the influence of the disinformation about transgender people that I see all the time, every day. That often comes from people who have no formal training on, um, you know, like what a transgender person is or people who've never met a trans person. Um, it doesn't take much time to clear up dis- disinformation about gender identity, but it makes like such an incredible difference for transgender students like myself. For so many years, I was actually like unable to learn properly because I felt so unsafe and unsure at school and I didn't know if I was supported. Um, and just having someone there to talk about those, um, concepts officially and clear up that disinformation would have done so much to help me with, um, my learning. Um, I'm also really thankful that there is like comprehensive information on sexual education and the health ed standards and I encourage you to support sexual health education that is comprehensive, inclusive, and age appro- appropriate. Students like myself deserve to have officially medically accurate information about our bodies. It's really important to remember that many students aren't comfortable talking to their parents about their sexual health. I know for sure I wasn't, it's really uncomfortable and it's hard to talk about. Um, having that person there officially at school to educate these students about it is so important, especially when it comes to students who might not have parents in the first place or their parents just aren't available or able to talk about these concepts with them. Um, I was really deeply appreciative of the teachers at my school who taught sex ed because it's such an important, um, thing that I believe is necessary for students to understand about their health. Um, and that is all, thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, then you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, my name is Mark Ashley Price and I am from Highland Park, which is like a city within Detroit. Um, I, I, the reason why I'm calling is because I am a former school board member of Highland Park and I was wondering if, is, is there any way that the State Board of Education could help the Highland Park School District? I ask because the Highland Park School District only has one charter school that's from kindergarten to the eighth grade. I was wondering if the State BOE could help Highland Park with a high school and other things as well that would help the children of Highland Park. I could go on and on about this, about how the school district of Highland Park came to this point about having one charter school, but I know I'm time limited. Um, the school, the, the school district of Highland Park needs as much help as it could get. Please help Highland Park, the, please help the Highland Park School District for the sake of the children. I'm begging the State BOE and the state to help Highland, the Highland Park School District. Again, my name, uh, again, my name is Mark Ashley Price and I'm a former school board member of Highland Park. Thank you so much and may God bless the great state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Very good. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Hey, hi, my name is Carol Bafflet Cooley and I'm a parent and school board trustee with Rochester Community Schools. I'm speaking today as an individual trustee about the proposed health education framework. And I want to express deep concern about both the content and the process. Pushing this through between state superintendents and under the influence of political advocacy groups undermines public trust. Rewriting scientific and biological reality around sex and gender is also not the role of this department. And I'm appalled that this framework seems to ignore Michigan law, MCL 380-10, as well as the recent Mahmoud versus Taylor Supreme Court decision, which clearly affirms parents' rights to direct the moral and religious upbringing of their children. Health class is a graduation requirement and it's not science-based. And it seems like the idea is to infuse more of these topics throughout the school day, so the waters are really muddy. I'm not even really sure how families would effectively opt out of this content if they were to disagree. And as you've been hearing today, many will. Meanwhile, only thirty-eight percent of Michigan third graders can read at grade level. I wish we could talk more about stuff like that. That's what our state board should be focused on, that's within your purview. But teaching other people's kids belief systems that conflict with their family's beliefs is really crossing a constitutional line. It's profoundly un-American to let government redefine truth in ways that silence conscience and conviction. This isn't fear mongering, that was such a dismissive and disrespectful thing to say. It's about our rights to raise our own kids. And where do you think you're getting the authority to do something like this? So I urge you not to adopt any framework that blurs those boundaries. Keep health education focused on science, safety, and respect while protecting parents' fundamental rights and every family's freedom of belief. I want to thank Nikki and Tom for your integrity and truly looking out for kids by respecting the rights of their parents. And I hope other board members are listening to and considering this and are willing to set aside their personal beliefs so that they can protect the rights of all. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me? Hello caller, are you there?
Hello.
Hello. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Hello, my name is Stephen Sisson, I'm calling from Otsega, Michigan. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and fellow educators, as stu- as stewards of Michigan's children, uh, state board members and teachers, there is solemn responsibility of not only educating but also strictly complying with the law. Michigan law is clear. Discussions surrounding gender identity and sexual health must honor parental rights, observe statutory consent requirements, and strictly avoid distributing any explicit material to minors. If these latest curriculum revisions mandating lessons on gender identity, removing parental consent, um, for contraceptives and greatly expanding sexual content risk crossing the critical line between education and illicit conduct. If these standards proceed as drafted, teachers administering, administering certain lessons risk violating Michigan statutes related to child sexually abusive material or parental opt-out rights. School board members who vote to enact these standards will face administrative complaints, lawsuits, career-ending sanctions, and criminal investigations. Some may believe government officials and staff enjoy qualified immunity protecting them from legal consequences. While qualified immunity may shield some from some civil liability, it is not a blanket protection. Reports have made clear that qualified immunity does not protect willful violations of law, gross negligence, or acts outside the scope of authorized duties. Simply voting to implement unlawful policies or knowingly forcing teachers to engage in illegal conduct exposes bor- exposes board members and educators to personally, personal liability and loss of license. Parents justifiably fear intrusion on their rights while teachers fear being caught in illegal mandates. Imagine a teacher following state curriculum, reported for grooming or distributing unlawful explicit material. Imagine board members such as yourselves voting yes on these standards, suddenly entangled in lawsuits, financial ruin, and public disgrace. Do not, do not let political pressure blind us board to the risks of legal prosecution and qualified immunity limits. Let caution and respect for law, students, and parental rights guide us. Do not turn well-intended teachers and volunteers into defendants in court. Let us fight for a curriculum that protects children, respects families, and safeguards the critical role of educators. The stakes are too high to proceed recklessly. Illegal consequences, personal devastation, and community division hanging in the balance. Additionally, sexualized material like that you're promoting makes sexual groomers' jobs much easier. Realistically, this curriculum is a sexual predator's dream. As such, it is dangerous to vulnerable children. Michigan's children are not meat sacks for sexual entertainment. Stop trying to teach them that they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Very-
Can you hear me?
Yep, got you, loud and clear. If you would please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Hi, my name's Amanda and I'm from Wayne County. Um, I just wanted to say that I was opposed to the health and sexual education framework that we're trying to blur the lines. Health criteria and sexual education should be separate. I don't know why we're combining them. There's a lot of, like has been said, there has been misinformation, but a lot of it has been very detailed and laid out. Um, I feel like the sex ed is being manipulated as health criteria when the ideologies behind sex ed are not based on, not based on health or facts, they're based on choices. And the ideology of inclusion and diversity doesn't fit the bill on somebody that makes a choice. Um, currently, our districts are suffering across the state with things that should be addressed as far as teachers not, classrooms not being staffed. We have our special education programs where we aren't even getting teachers inside of our classrooms and those are the things that need to be addressed. We have a high rise of, a more high rise of special education or special needs kids and they're not getting the things that they need. But here we are talking about sex education and health standards being combined when there's bigger things that are at risk.
Caller, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Got it. Did you break up or are you all set? Sorry.
Nope, currently our, our school board trying to put in the Sexual Education Advisory Board, they're not even following guidelines, they're not even requiring for anybody on the board to have medical background. How can we have somebody on the board making decisions for our kids based on health criteria and facts that don't even have the knowledge to do it? I think that the guidelines need to be very well laid out so parents understand that transparency is not being portrayed inside of our schools and it's not being portrayed inside of our, at our school board meetings and it's a very large problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Very good. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Jessica Mathiak and I'm a parent and registered nurse here in Michigan and I'm also the co-founder of Michigan Save Our Kids, which is an online army of fourteen thousand Michigan parents and educators. I had a speech prepared today, but after listening to hours and hours and hours of, of information from this board today, that I just had to speak from my heart. I'm extremely frustrated and exhausted with the amount of information that is constantly be being thrown at our children when these discussions need to be done and conducted in the home with the parent. We are continually putting our parents or, excuse me, our teachers into positions where they are very uncomfortable, having to have dialogue and they're being forced to have these standards. We can talk all day long about semantics, but at the end of the day, this is sex education that's being incorporated and placed under a standard, which is then going to be required by our teachers and our school districts to adopt. Many callers and, and speakers today talked about our education being very poor here in the state of Michigan and I am a proud public school graduate and my children are in the public schools and we have got to do better for our kids. We cannot continue to keep incorporating things into the curriculum and into standards and slapping things together thinking it's going to make better for our students and our children's futures. They're not going to be competitive in a global market when our shift is constantly on sexual orientation, gender ideology, and things that have absolutely nothing to do with academia in the K through 12 setting. This proposal risks further dividing our communities and placing teachers in those very awkward and uncomfortable positions. Many speakers today talked about having opt-outs. What kind of nightmare is that going to create for our school districts? To have to, to segregate kids based on who can and who cannot learn this lesson? And how do we ensure that teachers are not able to incorporate things as individuals? These, these topics are very important and I caution you to please heed and listen to the advice of the parents and the educators who have spoken out today and not force this, this resolution. I'm asking you to oppose it as it stands and go back to Michigan Department of Education, make them do the job that they're supposed to be doing and creating a better learning environment for our kids. We are done with this stuff. And if it continues, we will continue to push back with strong legal force. We've had enough. Thank you for your time. Please do not push this through. We need to reject this type of standard and go back to what's important for kids. And as a healthcare professional, I do support incorporating new, new things into our health standards, but not at the cost of parental rights violations and not at the cost of hurting our teachers and our kids.
Thank you for your comments today.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Very good. If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Sure. Hi, my name is Lauren Grayson Parker. I'm calling from Rochester, Michigan. I'm calling to strongly support the proposed health education standards and appreciate their focus on helping students build real life skills like decision-making, self-management, and self-activity. The standards are age-appropriate and medically accurate, ensuring that every student receives reliable information for each grade level. It's also opt-out eligible. I've gone through this with my oldest child through high school and her health classes. I've gone through her books. I've gone through the curriculum. Our curriculum in Rochester is actually led by Crossroads, which is taught by its own elementary school students. So I've gone through the standards to look what's appropriate for her and I'm pleased with what's there. I also value how they center the needs of all students, connecting instruction to whole child initiatives that promote both academic and emotional growth. The updated grade groupings make sense for how Michigan already delivers sexual, sorry, delivers health education. And the inclusion of sexual orientation and gender identity ensures that every student feels represented, respected, and supported. It's also encouraging to see standards aligned with national best practices while remaining consistent with Michigan laws. Thank you to the Michigan Department of Education for leading such a transparent and thoughtful process. I urge the state board to move forward with a swift adoption of these important standards for the benefit of all Michigan students. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. If you would please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Thank you. My name's Danielle. I'm calling from Milford, Michigan. I'm a parent of three children currently enrolled in our public school system and I'm deeply concerned about the increasing presence of political agendas within our schools. And I'm strongly opposed to this health curriculum and sex curriculum. The initiative appears to be advancing a bipartisan agenda rather than focusing on the genuine educational needs of our students. My confidence in our school system has declined significantly since similar politically motivated policies were implemented during COVID. Our state's academic performance continues to fall, yet we are diverting time and attention away from the core learning subjects to focus on sensitive and personal issues that should be addressed within families and not in the classroom. Additionally, these policies place an unfair burden on teachers, requiring them to teach controversial material that many do not personally support. This not only decreases morale, but it also undermines the quality of education and we do not need more of that. Teachers are most effective when they are allowed to focus on academics and feel respected in their roles. I also want to state that I will not permit my children to participate in any such class and will pull them from the public school system. I urge the board to prioritize academic excellence and parental rights over political agendas. Our children deserve better. Thank you all for staying tonight.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Very good. If you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Okay, thank you. My name is Chris Kyla. I'm from Skeggen, Michigan. I have four children. One is a transgender daughter. My recommendations I'm going to state upfront and then make some comments because there have been plenty of people that have adequately covered some of these subjects. I think you should remove the sex education portion from your health education. It's inappropriate for the school system to be doing that since it's a values and moral-based decision. And a lot of the teaching that you plan to do is related to a certain worldview that not everybody accepts or lives their life by, as many people have already pointed out. I'd like to comment on the teacher who said that, you know, if 4% of people disagree, you should disregard their comments. Well, she mentioned democracy. This is a constitutional republic. And the laws developed in our country and in our state are there to protect the minority. So of course you should protect transgender rights, but you should also protect the rights of the parents that wish to bring their children up with the appropriate values that they have. So any decisions you make related to this should protect everyone. This is not a zero-sum game. Certainly, you could have classes for parents to teach them these wide range of concepts and have them teach their children that this is something that children should be taught. As a chemical engineer of over 40 years, I am appalled at the World Economic Forum with poll math and writing and reading down to 21%. I think this shows a serious lack of impact or understanding of what basic math does for people. This produces people that are highly analytical, that understand technology. I designed equipment and started up chemical plants. And without a good math program or science program, our children are not going to get the education that they need. So also, I would say that teachers don't always follow their lesson plans. And I've noted teachers in the school system here that think that they have more control over our own children than we do. And the administrations don't seem to be able to enforce the fact that parents are the ones that are in charge of their children, not the teachers in the classroom. So I would urge you not to adopt the sex education into the health education program. I want you to protect the wishes of parents that want to teach their own children morals and values. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mike, are there any other persons who have pre-registered for public comment today?
Yes, there's one more.
I apologize. Thank you.
What was that?
Caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. If you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
My name is Courtney Prouse. I'm calling from Wayne County. So good afternoon, members of Michigan State Board of Education. My name is Courtney Prouse and I'm here today because I want to ask a question that deserves clear and direct answers. Who is responsible for ensuring that districts actually follow these new guidelines? It took me nearly five months of constant communication and persistence with my local district, the Taylor School District, to ensure that they were in compliance. During that time, I discovered that the district's sex education advisory board was operating in direct violation of MDE guidelines. I reported this non-compliance to several people. Hello?
We can hear you, caller.
I'm sorry. My YouTube came back on. I apologize. It's really far behind.
Got it.
But anyways, I took, I took nearly five months of my time ensuring that my district was following MDE guidelines. They were in direct violation. I reported this non-compliance to several people within the MDE department and received absolutely no response. No support, no acknowledgement, nothing. I ultimately advocated on my own until the sex education advisory board was completely shut down. But it should not take one parent or educator months of effort and multiple FOIA requests just to get the district to follow the established state requirements. And now with the new guidelines being proposed, I have serious concerns. They are not only ridiculous, but they also allow local policies to be created and processes to happen at the local level with zero accountability. Taylor couldn't even operate within the previous MDE guidelines. A simple, clear expectation was already too much for some districts to manage. Even more concerning, these proposals appear to move toward removing sex education advisory boards and limiting parent involvement and control. That's deeply troubling because in my case, it was a parent's voice, mine, that finally held the district accountable. Parent involvement isn't optional, it's essential. We are the ones at the stake in the game. These are our children. We are the ones showing up every board meeting, reading every policy, filling every request, and demanding that our schools follow the rules meant to protect our children. So again, I ask, who's going to hold these districts accountable when they fail to comply? Because if parents are silenced and oversight remains absent, these new policies will fail before they even begin. And I want to make one final point, that not a single person speaking so far in favor of these proposed guidelines today has been a parent. The ones showing up to oppose them are. That should tell you something. Parents are the ones with the real stake in this. We are the ones raising these children, guiding them, and trusting our schools to educate them. We are, we are not opposing progress. We're demanding partnership and accountability. We should have a say. We should have control over what our children are being taught. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, are there any other callers who have pre-registered for public comment today?
There are not.
Thank you. This concludes public participation.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Thank you, Mike. All right, at this point, it's comments by the members of the state board.
Kind of waved, but who was the gentleman's name who gave public comment with the, he was open about having a transgender child, but he was referring to the free exercise and equal protection clauses? He was near the end. He had a lot of really valuable perspective. Christopher Kajala was his name.
Okay.
I guess I've.
All set? I'm sorry. All set?
Yeah, for now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McMillan.
I just was wondering, is there a timeframe for the standards to come? Is it expected to be next month that the standards, the health standards will come here?
We were looking at next month, but we will, oh, thank you very much. We were looking at the next couple of months, but we will reassess. I'm going to meet with the team.
Okay. I mean, okay. When you get more of an understanding, will you let us know?
Absolutely. Any other board member comments? Future, the future meetings of the state board of education are scheduled for Thursday, Thursday, November 13th. Thursday, November 13th, here in this boardroom. And then December 9th is a Tuesday. This will be Dr. Malakal's first meeting. And Tuesday, January 13th, 2026. If there are any topics state board of ed members would like to recommend for future meeting agendas, please notify Ms. Evans or myself. And do we do a motion to adjourn? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.